All right, I have six thirty, so we'll call a meeting to order. And let's believe this, please.
The password for the wifi?
All right, do we have any additions to the agenda, please?
Um, we do have some changes to the agenda. Um, we will be taking off six A two, the makeup air unit replacement for clarifier building at the wastewater treatment plant until we get additional information on, um, on the bids. Um, and then we'll be adding, um, compre- uh, under A, we'll do A three. Uh, six A three will do the comprehensive plan engineering costs. Um, and then we'll add under A four, um, fire, fire department, fire chief and assistant chief appointments for two thousand eighteen. And then after that, under six A five, we'll be doing benefits, which is specifically health and, uh, change in health insurance plan for city employees.
All right, I'll look for motion to approve the agenda, uh, with the addition of A six A two and the addition of six A three for engineering costs, uh, for comprehensive plan, six A four, uh, annual appointments for fire department chief and assistant chief, and six A five benefit change, uh, for city employees' health insurance.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second? Second, yeah. I'll say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Perfect, thank you. Uh, now we'll open up for public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll close public comments and we, uh, is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Now, I want for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Motion comes overboard. Do we have a second? Do we have a second, constable Butterfield? Any further discussion? I'll say aye.
Aye.
Perfect, that will take us to six A one.
Okay, um, I'll get my power pointed up. Okay, um, Mayor and Council, uh, every year we do, the city, um, does a, the authorizing of assessments of unpaid utility bills. Um, we have sent, um, for residents that we were, um, had a past due balance on their utility bill, we did send them a letter in, uh, October stating that, um, they did the balance that, or the overdue balance would need to be into the city by November twenty fourth. Um, at that time, we do, we do kind of make a cutoff so we can put the, a final list together that gets certified to the county. They do have the ability to pay until December and then we can contact the county, uh, before it gets put on taxes. But at this time, um, we do have a list in front of you, um, for those, uh, those current properties that are, um, still remain delinquent as of last week. And, um, and we are, um, proposing, um, oh, here it is, man.
Oh, that's not, but I don't know.
Oh, my gosh.
What was the amount pre, pre-letter that that was going to tell?
Um, we, we had about probably like fifty.
Fifty homes?
Fifty homes.
Or, or, okay, how, how long is the value?
And then we got it down to about twenty. Let me, um, do you mind if I go print it? I can't believe I didn't get this in there. Um, do you mind if we take a few seconds?
Yeah, I, I, I don't, does anyone need to, to someone want to see the list specifically?
I can get the, I can get you the list after the meeting.
I don't need to see the list. This is an annual thing that we consistently do, so I'm, I'm more curious to where we were before the latter versus where we are now.
Yeah, so we went, we, we had about fifty to sixty and then we went down to about twenty.
Okay.
So we don't, I mean, it, it did go down significantly and there are a few people that have, we're working with until December. Um, we do have some things set up with them, um, so the list will probably continue to go down. But, yeah, this happens about twenty.
Good. All right, I'll look for motion to approve. Residents of National seven dash seven dash thirty eight, allowing assessment of unpaid utilities to be twenty eighteen taxes.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion? Seconding for the discussion on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, thank you. Uh, then that will take us to six A three, as, uh, six A two has been deleted. We're on six A three engineering.
Yep, uh, Mayor and Council, um, a, uh, document has been handed out. Um, this did go in front of you at a previous workshop in September. Uh, it is the proposal of this, from the city engineer for their work to be done on the comprehensive plan. Um, the total amount is thirty-three thousand, three hundred dollars as an estimate. Uh, I know that this was discussed at that meeting and was kind of decided that this would be a budget item. Um, it was to be put on the December, um, December packet as a, an approval item, but, um, it's my understanding that the city planner needs to start working with the city engineer at this time. Um, it is a two thousand eighteen budget item, um, and so I, once we do pass this, it'll, um, I'll, it is, it'll be clear to the city engineer and to the city planner that these are, this is a proposal for the two thousand eighteen budget. Um, but I think there was just some, a, a few items that the city planner needed, the city engineer to kind of work with him on. Um, and so he asked if I could present this to you today as an item that we could approve to then be, I mean, it is included on the budget already, but just to be approved so that he can start moving forward with his work.
Moving it up, we're moving it up for what?
Two weeks.
We have plans?
Yep, yep, for, instead of December.
Well, seeing as we've discussed it at the, at the meeting, so, as much as it's a lot of money, it's something we have to, we have to have comprehensive plan done and a portion that's needed, so I'll look for a motion to approve. Oh, thanks, proposal for the city of mayor comprehensive plan, an amount of thirty-three thousand, three hundred dollars dated August seventh, twenty seventeen.
Motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Motion seconding for the discussion. And then this will allow John to start working with.
Right.
With all the make, the, the, so that he, he had it situated.
Yep.
Correct? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're going to six A four, uh, fire department, uh, annual appointments for chief and assistant chief. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll discuss this, Maggie, if that's all right. It, um, this came up this morning. We had our, uh, first personnel committee meeting since we re, or restructure our personnel committee this morning and one of the items that we're on there, um, as we're discussing personnel and, um, and I'll get through, I'll, I'll discuss them around agenda items at the end of the meeting, um, when I give my update. But it did come up about chief and assistant chief and how we structure those appointments and how we're doing them. Um, I, I was, uh, contacted by one of the firefighters on this. I've done some research on it in the last couple days on this, um, with the league. Right now, we're appointing our chief and assistant chief in a meeting at the fire department.
Through the election.
In a, in election, yep. So I got information from the league and Maggie printed off some of the main stuff. And if you look on page two, uh, one, two, the third page of her packet, um, that's a selection versus election and the league very much, uh, is recommending that you stay away from the election and get away from that. They realize a lot of fire departments have done that in the past. And I think it's time we need to get away from that and not run the risk of having some sort of discrimination or, um, any issues and get ahead of that. So I would propose, uh, and, and take some time to look at this. Their next meeting is a week from today, so we can't, I didn't want to wait till, you know, it was too late. I would propose until the personnel committee can take a good look at this and make a recommendation, um, on how to structure it. I think we should, uh, take the appointments that we have for twenty seventeen and extend those into twenty eighteen until we can further, uh, investigate this and make a decision on council, what's best for the city. That's kind of where we were at on it. The league is very opposed to how we're doing it. And then there's a few other items in here that came up in the personnel. Um, the league talks about bylaws versus the personnel policy. We have bylaws, we should be looking at, um, you know, and that's another thing that we can take on as a personnel committee and, and structure some of that, but I'm concerned with how we're doing our appointments for chief and assistant chief at this time.
Well, as well as the bylaws and things like that. We don't recommend following the bylaws that actually fire departments should be running as an entity, they are an entity of the city, so they should be operating under a, uh, under the city's personnel policy, you know, the rules and regulations, S and Bs.
So I'd propose we leave the appointment as is going into twenty eighteen until we can introduce policy in place would be my proposal. And I'll make a motion, uh, to, for twenty eighteen appointments for the fire chief and assistant chief, leave them as, uh, the appointments for twenty, uh, that were, uh, appointed for twenty seventeen. Do we have a second? One second. All right, we have a motion, a seconding. Any further discussion?
Uh, so the way they're doing it now is city council's appointing based on what you guys are electing, of the fire department electing?
No, currently the fire department's a membership to vote and decides who the, um, the chief, the chief, the assistant chief.
Okay.
The captains.
Okay. Okay. So how do they get an appointment then from us?
That's.
Because we don't want to do that.
Well, we'll, there'll be a, more of a selection process and almost qualified. And again, it may turn out as the personnel committee looks into this and does more research, maybe there might not be a change and it stays as and then they go back to how it is, but we, we don't have our arms wrapped around it. All this came up within the last few days, um, when we weren't able to look at it. So it'll be, it would be what the league's proposed as more of a, a selection, most qualified candidate.
So that may be no different than applying for any other job.
Right, okay.
So what they're doing for the tenants right now and what we're doing after the council meeting is we're interviewing for new tenants. So they're having in and interviewing for those positions and then the group, the committee will, uh, make their recommendation. Uh, it likely will be something similar to that.
In two thousand and nineteen?
For two thousand and eighteen.
So I, yeah, I was wondering if the motion should probably, you know, stay, you know, the appointment stay the same until, until the city council, you know, those nice processes?
Y- yeah, that was the intent of my motion. I can, I can change that.
amend that.
Yeah, that would be for the year.
For the year, yeah, that's why I said, I changed to, okay.
Intend policy is, and, and all.
I like that word better than.
I can amend that or that was the intent of mine and who seconded it. Uh, so the intention would be, yes, until there's a new policy, uh, in place where then the appointments for the interviewing or the selection process can't take place more than twenty eighteen. And do you agree with that?
Yeah.
Correct? Okay. Before that clarification.
Okay.
And that was the intent of my motion, not to leave them that way by any means for the entire year. Um, I, I, I just think it's something we need to look at. I, um, I think that we have a unique situation, uh, with families down, I mean, more than one fam- and, and I think we could get ourselves, the city could get themselves into trouble.
And eventually, it's not already, I don't know. I have not been a part of those meetings or anything. It could always end up being a popularity contest, uh.
Right, as opposed to qualified contest.
Yeah.
A lot, a lot of the cities around us have gone to appointing for sure, uh, chief. About certain, uh, assistants, captains, like, right, uh, so it is a point of, uh, for some time.
Okay.
Some cities have even, um, uh, uh, one that's interviewing for chief, they have other communities come in and be part of that process also. Um, so it's really changing and I think we're a little bit behind on that.
Okay.
I, I apologize that we're just late in the year and this is coming up, but this is just where we're at when it all came to light, so.
Okay.
I think we need to take the appropriate steps and at least investigate it. Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, where's my agenda? Then that'll take us to six A five, benefits, uh, change for employees' health insurance.
Okay, um, Mayor and Council, um, I know at the previous workshop, uh, it was decided, and I just want some clarification. Um, I believe it was decided that, um, for health and, or for insurance coverage, it would go up to eight hundred, but then there was some, there was some, uh, maybe some confusion. I don't know if it was like six hundreds would stay for individual and then eight hundred for family. So I just wanted some clarification on, on that at the workshop. Um, so what I'm, just looking at benefits for next year, um, and using that information that was at the workshop, I, uh, was looking at our current healthcare benefits. Um, the thing, when I was looking at it, um, right now, our, our city, uh, premiums are based on age and then also the age, if you, of the dependent or the, the spouse of, um, anybody that elects to have a spouse or a, or a dependent. Um, right now, with the, where we're sitting, we do have that six hundred dollar a month coverage, um, but we're not using it all. Like, so let's say for me, my, for my age, like, my premium is three hundred and forty and we allocate the six hundred, um, I'm not using that two hundred and sixty. Um, so that's kind of like every month, kind of going nowhere. And so what I did was I was kind of looking at other cities and I included a, kind of their coverage from all the other cities in Carver, kind of how they structure. Um, all the cities use HSA plans, HSA, high deductible plans. Um, and so what, what I'm proposing is that we, that we switch to an HSA, high deductible plan, um, and then we kind of would maybe restructure our policy to do a hundred percent single coverage, eighty percent family, so that if you do have, um, if you do have like a dependent or a spouse, you do pay a little bit of that premium, but then, um, the, the premiums are also lower because it's an HSA plan. Um, and then the city would then also contribute a little bit into an HSA and that's all using the same money that you've already allocated. It's not going over, we're actually still under the amount that we, you've already allocated per employee, but it's just kind of resh- taking that money and reshuffling it, um, in a different plan, um, so that we're using more of that premium.
So, just a little background on this, so this is a discussion personnel, it was added, I guess the agenda is last minute, I understand it's last minute, and if it's, if we're comfortable with that, I mean, we can obviously, um, but it depends the same why it came up and why it's urgency of this, we have to, we have to elect a new plan for that.
We have to elect to change it or, um, elect to stay with it by December first.
Okay, by December first, so that's why it's here tonight. Um, we talked about it in the personnel committee and like, um, our thoughts in the personnel committee, and again, I thought we had, uh, had a council here tonight, but our thoughts in the personnel committee was, uh, yeah, the money's not changing, the amount we budgeted for in twenty eighteen, that's not changing. It seems reasonable to us, uh, Maggie has reached out to all the employees and they're all in favor of this. They would like to see that switch, but we do recognize it's last minute, it's a big thing. Um, so we certainly don't want to try to rush anything through. I mean, if we have to leave it, we have to leave it, um, on that comfort, but I felt it from the money standpoint, yeah. So let's a little background on it, so Maggie, before you.
Yeah, I, and I was just saying, like, it's, it's just taking the money that we've allocated and just restructuring how it's used, because right now, we're not using fourteen hundred of it a month. So of that, of that, um, six hundred dollars that each employee gets, like, we're not using fourteen hundred of it. And so part of me was like, well, if we're not using it, we're just losing it and it would be better to maybe restructure it to, so that employees, um, are getting maybe a better benefit, but for the same money that the city, the council already approved.
We talked to, uh, Earl earlier over your work, like, he quotes for, for that motion, how it would look like in the past.
Yep, and that's in, that, I do have that. The problem is I think some of this information is private, so I couldn't present it at the meeting, um, because I think it has like your, people's date of birth and ages and stuff like that. Um, and so what I can tell you is that if, if that amount that I did, that you guys talked about at the workshop, that eight hundred, if that's for all employees, that it would be thirty-two hundred total, we would be using less than three thousand for this new plan a month. Um, so I think it's like we've allocated thirty, we budgeted thirty-two hundred a month, we're using less than three, a, a little less than three hu- thousand. Did I say that right? Yeah. And, and whereas if we were using, if we stick with the old plan, that'd be, we would be u- we, we wouldn't be using fourteen hundred of it. So in this case, we're, we're not using like two hundred of it, the, the old way, we're, we aren't using fourteen hundred of it. So we're letting like a bunch of it kind of just, you know. So that was my proposal, to, to maybe try an HSA plan. Um, I don't think we've done an HSA plan. It seems like it's really popular among other cities. I know I've been on one, um, I did talk to the employees and they are in favor of, of trying an HSA, high deductible plan. That does have lower premiums and then.
I think it's a good idea. I'd like to see us move towards that. You know, that being said, I wish that we had a full council meeting too. Um, uh, my, as far as I'm concerned, if somebody isn't comfortable with it or wants to wait till a full council and we had to call a special meeting to do that, I would be hopefully with that, call for that, because I think it's important enough, you know, to, to make, to, to make, we have to retain. It's not time, not time for meetings tomorrow, it's not a workshop meeting or it's a regular meeting, we take action.
The budget works.
We take, we, we, so we do not take action.
Um, and I don't think.
I'm with Eric. I don't think it's fair right now to have the personnel committee here who's in favor of it, who is the majority and, and have that go through. I don't think that's, I don't think that's appropriate. I'm not comfortable with that. We would take it to both and both here's our council, but I, I just don't think that's appropriate.
And I would like to see a little bit more detailed information, you know, so.
It seems now, thinking through it more to that, I think this is absolutely the way to go, I think, to rush it through, you know, you know, four day or week is too, I think it's a little too quick. Um, we did talk to personnel that we need to look at the benefits package and I know we talked about that at a council level to maintain employees to be competitive and we just have a few other items that, you know, and I think we can do that in twenty eighteen and really set ourselves up to be competitive, but, um, I think this is the way to go. I don't know how comfortable I am, making that change right now.
I would agree.
So, can you collect that information by tomorrow?
Um, I, I don't.
Do this tomorrow?
Probably not, which is, I mean, if, if, I think it's like you can't, for workshops, you can't add items. Only regular meetings you can add items. And so if it hasn't been posted with that item, you can't take action.
Um.
So we have to wait till the eleventh then?
Yeah, and that would be too late, but I mean, if we have to wait till next year, that's, that's, that's just what we're gonna have to do. Um, I didn't realize, I, I didn't realize that it had to be, um, December first. I thought it was later and so, um, I didn't realize that the, when I was talking to our reps, that it was sold soon. Um, so, I, I mean, if it is something that has to be done in two thousand and eighteen, then, then we'll have to just take.
I think we should wait and get a nice, and really do some shopping around on that, on the HSAs and make that a nice, like, I think, I think it would be beneficial to take the time.
No, there's no way you can get information, have a meeting, have something on the thirtieth, get approved and still make that deadline on the first?
Um, it's possible, I mean, if we do.
I mean, I would like to just at least try to, to make this happen. I think it's important enough that you are employees.
Hopefully it's the broker, a couple more weeks, like December or December.
Uh, I don't think it's the broker, I think it's the actual agent.
Why don't you find that?
Yep.
Uh, because we, we'd have, we need three days to post a meeting.
Yeah, so we would have to do Friday.
We wouldn't be able to post it tomorrow, so Wednesday, Thursday, Friday would be the earliest to have that meeting, Friday night.
Unless, I can double check if, you know, if it is, since it is part of the budget, if that can tie in, but, um.
I don't know, I'd like to see, at least try.
Okay, yeah, I'll do some checking.
So what, what if it does switch? What if we, we've switched it and went to that, but we're still within our budget and then, you decide you don't like it, I mean, now we switch again in twenty eighteen, correct?
Right.
I mean, going into twenty nineteen, correct?
Right.
I mean, now, now it's kind of go, the employees are in favor of it all along. It's no extra money out of our budget than what we're currently paying today. I mean, I still, I would like to see some numbers on paper and see what.
Or like a breakdown.
You know, too, I mean, it's pretty abstract right now.
Yeah, yeah. All right, then I think we'll just have to table it and see if we get further information and see if we can have a meeting, reach out to our current and see if we can extend that a week.
Mm-hmm.
Or two, um, see what, see what can be done with that.
Um, yeah, and what kind of information would, like, would you like, want more information? I can, like, give you, ah, I'm trying to get, I can, the proposed deductibles I can give you, um, I think it's just like the actual rate thing or.
Yeah, I think a lot of what the premiums are going to be, single and family, um, the insurance company, what the agency is set up like.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so the insurance company would stay the same, it would be preferred one. It would be a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible for single and a five thousand for family. Um, and that would be after deductible is met, a hundred percent, which is, um, similar to the other, I was trying to be kind of competitive with, with these other cities. Um, yeah, and then it would be a hundred percent premium coverage for single, eighty for family, and then the, they would cover, the employee would cover the extra twenty percent. Um, and then we would do, um, either a hundred or a hundred and fifty for single into an HSA each month, or we can do, um, with our current budget, we can do for family, we can do up to three hundred.
I don't know what translation to do is, um, so only the city, so only, yeah.
Yep.
Up to a certain point.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the employee has to put in at least extra amount and the city will put in extra amount.
Yep, like a matching.
If the employee doesn't take advantage of that, then the city doesn't put anything in there.
Okay.
So I know a lot of people have done that.
Okay, I can look into that too.
Because I know one of the companies I worked for, as long as the employee put in a minimum of five hundred dollars, the company was putting in a minimum of a thousand.
Okay.
So I'm going to start fifteen hundred in there here, so.
Okay, then I suggest we table this for now and Maggie, you get me in contact, um, and if we can schedule a meeting or contact our current one and see if they can extend us a little bit.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. And that'll take us to six B one. And that'll take us to six B one.
Okay, so, this is, um, a final request, a final payment application from the city engineer. Um, it is their fifth pay request for work that was completed from March this year to October thirty-first on the wetland rest- restoration project. Um, there is a little bit of an estimate for, or, within the estimate is a little extra work, um, for drain tile installation, intake and ditch cleaning. Um, and the payment application releases the remaining two percent retained. Um, according to the city engineer, the project is now considered complete, and, um, and so they are requesting that ten thousand six hundred eighty-three point six two dollars, um, be released, uh, as a final payment for that work that was finalized. Um, I know...
This close-up project, I, I talked to Dave Martini today on this. This close-up project, is that the final, um, uh, project's completed. We do have our wetland credits then, which the, what's a lot of the intent of doing some of this, and our wetland credits will pay for, um, this, and as it turns out now, the credit we get for those wetlands is now even, has increased, um, and then it's also solved the water issues and problems we have in the city as part of our ongoing project. So, um, it resolved, and you can see now where that wetland is, where it's, it's not standing water out there that we've had typically, and that's even flooded up over some of the other roads, so, um, that was where all this started. Again, this has been going on for, oh, Eric, five, six, seven, eight years, um, a, a lot of work's gone into this, so it's finally a completed project now, um, with this last So I'll look for a motion to, um, uh, release the final payment of ten thousand six hundred eighty-three dollars and sixty-two cents to Schneider X. A. I love that. We'll, we'll motion second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is, motion carries. Okay, City Council report, uh, Eric, can you report on, what's your report?
At our last park board meeting, um, we had a drop-in visitor. We had Susan from Mayor Lutheran High School that we had partnered with to do the five K list. Um, so she came by to say thank you very much to the city, to help, you know, to the city for helping, uh, to all that. And, uh, the park board had asked her, um, did they, did Mayor Lutheran want to have our participation next year? And she said, you know, they appreciate it, but it's completely up to the park board and the city council, so...
Well, it's the park board's, or did, was there not further discussion on it? It's not like, okay.
Yeah, she had to stop in, turn the lights on, so...
Okay, all right, any other, anything else? And then we had a Personnel Committee, um, meeting this morning that I talked about, so, um, we did talk about performance, upcoming performance appraisals and how we're gonna structure those now, you know, with, uh, the city administrator, he'll be here four months, um, we're, we're gonna move forward with them and she'll do, uh, performance appraisals for all the other employees, and then we'll do the city administrator, as we always do at council. Uh, we talked about the benefits that Maggie just explained, on, um, changing some of that. Personnel Committee communication, some, uh, ways we can communicate to the entire council on, um, one of them is obviously minutes, uh, minutes will be in our packets and these sorts of things, where we talk about what means we're at. I think we should start getting the communication out there. So certainly if anyone's not getting anything they need, let us know, and we'll change what we can, we'll structure, all that we're doing, everything else, get the minutes in, in the, um, regular council packets. Um, we've discussed offensive behavior training, some kind of training that we might wanna, initial training i- in, um, that might be beneficial for employees, and then the fire department structure, uh, for the, the employee, which is a key we discussed briefly. And that was our meeting.
Is the Personnel Committee planning on looking at the personnel policy?
Yes, yes, that, oh, was that not on there? Oh, I didn't have, yeah, we did talk about the policy. Yep, we're gonna look at that. Um, Maggie's gonna reach out, uh, to make sure we're getting, if there's specific sections that someone wants us to look at first, we'll start doing that. I mean, it's a big policy, so we'll start getting through it, but, uh, we wanna know if there's any certain sections that are, take a look at those right away and start, start structuring those out, so, uh, but yes, we will absolutely look at that. All right, any other business, uh, no other business, correct, Maggie?
No.
Um, and I'll look for, maybe you can see the other upcoming meetings, uh...
And the, the EDA meeting has been, uh, pushed off to a, in, I think it'll be in December. Um, we didn't have a, um, we didn't have enough people who were able to attend, so...
What was the, uh, what was pushing for this special?
That one was, um, they want to finalize their budget, and one thing they wanna do is a community video, and so they're just reaching out to a couple members of the community who do have those skills to do a video. And so they wanted to just have that discussion with them if they were interested, and then if they were, then we put it in the budget.
Great, okay, good, okay. And I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
We've got motion.
One second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all is, we are adjourned. Okay, let's get situated here quick, and then we'll just jump right into the, uh, workshop. All right, we'll call the, uh, workshop to order, uh, so we can start right off with number three, Maggie, if that's fine.
Yeah, um, so I, I brought this to, I'm bringing this to your guys' attention, um, uh, as city administrator, I am kind of the person that overlooks the investments of the city, um, and so with that, I'm kind of trying to, I've been looking at our, what investments we currently have, um, and kind of who I can partner with, um, to kind of learn a little bit more about our investments and, and kind of how we can approach it moving forward. Um, and so I have, I, I know we're currently with, um, oh gosh, Edward Jones, um, to do that. Um, I have worked with Ellers in the past, and, um, I did meet with Edward Jones a little bit as well. Um, their person is very new, started like two weeks ago, um, and so, um, just, um, and I, I, I'm not, like, it, if you guys are comfortable with Edward Jones, I understand. Um, and I have worked with Ellers, I've been working with Jack to kind of get a little bit more information on our investments. Um, and so just, I guess our goal is to kind of, for him to work with me, um, and get me going for a couple years and kind of get me comfortable making those investments, and then it would kind of be a transition out, you know, in a sense, um, possibly, um, so that I could maybe take this on as a full-time thing. Um, so Jack's here to kind of just present a little information about what he would be helping me with and...
So all that's, everything, all investments now, all of our, our challenge?
No, um, well, they, they're kind of our, our broker.
One, one of the, yeah, yeah, I, I've worked on a lot for the city, probably worked on it for a couple, seven years now with Luann. Uh, Luann had, uh, a lot of different tactics, used a lot of different banking brokers, and, uh, she was a sponsor for, for putting all that together, and then reporting that to you guys. Her investment policy is supposed to be orderly, but I'm not sure if that's happening or not. Uh, but there, there are quite a bit of moves to, for the size of there, and I think that the discussions with Maggie, we discussed this, there's a lot of things happening that are very smaller and very, that their brokers, that can really be consolidated, and, you know, Maggie expressed to me too that, you know, uh, she, she felt she needed to consolidate it, and so our role in, you guys are familiar with Todd and others, conscious of our version, our investment version, so we're, as a different city, as advisor, you know, brokers, not showing bonds, we're actively acting as, and we're trying to validate, you know, say investments as possible. So that's kind of the, kind of the idea of investment.
Right, and I wanna be able to get these investment, like, reports to you every quarter, or if more. Um, and I know, like, when that came up in our bond discussion was, are we doing that? And, and so I, um...
The S and P?
Right, in the writing call. And I, and I wanna be able to, like, start, like, every quarter at least, like, getting those reports to you and kind of where we're at in our investments and...
That's what, uh, with any of the council, I want to do, is communication to the council and have, make sure the council, and she and everything, whether or not they're reacting to any things, or how they handle that, to the council, but the council needs to be accountable, to be able to feel a point of, and be able to take that. And so I share responsibility of, yeah, which looks good, or, you know, Maggie, we should pay a lot of direction, so, um, we have, it's becoming more and more of an issue, um, you know, council, and accountability, and making sure that we're actually paid issue for the whole. Um, one of the things that Maggie and I talked about is, because we're, and we're advisors, we work with all of us, and there's, there's an issue here and there, specifically with Luann, um, and also, you know, support, and support local, and so, we've always done a lot of our clients, uh, but I think Maggie's got one, there's no problems, uh, but, I don't know the recommendation out of the session, you know, so we can see some of that, but, but it's good that you guys have an active interest in here. Sometimes we can act as a, um, kind of like, depending on race and attitude, if we're not paid, and I got breaks, or whatever, just savings or whatever, just to provide some analysis, which you have, and show the manager, like, hey, here's what, you know, it's a little comparable, that's kind of the area, you guys all saw, so, there's that kind of support provided as well, too, um, but, um, you know, so is it overseeing our current investments and kind of, yeah, I mean, give them some recommendations on, I, I mean... Exactly. They still stay the way they are, just kind of overseeing them, all of them as a group? Right, so that can be done a number of different ways. So everything can basically stay where it is, but when we invest and come up, or if there's, uh, things, you know, for example, the head job, the charity, you know, you should recommend, probably go to, um, develop the people more, I would, I would recommend those, 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 have a conversation about it, okay?
Yeah, we have had a couple things mature, actually in the last couple months since I've been here, and the hard thing is, for me, is, is, um, you know, stepping into it right away and just saying, okay, where, now where do we go with this money? Like, is it, do we wanna do one year, two year, or three year, and then...
Use your expertise to help manage through and navigate through some of those decisions.
Right.
Exactly. And the basis for this, too, and I just turned back to that, too, is, um, when you feel a little more cash flow analysis, so you have to not pay much of this, you may have a lot of flow throughout the year, but be able to have some confidence and say, okay, well, this is why we're gonna invest in two months, and this is why we're gonna invest in two years, and unless you have a good grasp of the end sound throughout the year, we don't feel that that's how, how we, we, so, um, you know, rates, rates, charts, and rates are not associated, but this will be as proactive, and that, and you're still as well, so, so, uh, like I said, that's a gamble, uh... No, I think that there's some, I just did a quick look at the, the broker relationships. I think there's something, something to this, um, and some of the folks that are operating the shop, that we can probably consolidate, probably, that's, that can make a recommendation, that can be discussed, you know, the council or the, or the community, but, uh, you know, some of the areas, I think, the commerce, they have a lot of relationships, operating relationships, so, so, um... How's your, how, how does the, how's the fee structured on that, on an hourly, when there's a phone call, we just get billed per hour that, that your user or to that, for this year, we'll handle this, just, just from a, how, how is that structured? Yeah, that's still a predetermined amount that we're, uh, overseeing potentially, and a lot of that relates to, you know, the cost of management, so let's say it's, uh, uh, three million dollars of the total amount of money, the national fee of investments, full aside, the usual parameters, uh, fully invested, that we manage, we oversee and assume, and we'll be able to charge the asset, so it should be, uh, probably throughout the year, uh, for, for three million, it's about a five dollar, or, 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 across the, so, um, like I said, you know, we, we tend to work, uh, a lot more with, uh, this whole, because I choose a lot of workers, they're much staff, to, especially before that, and so, a lot of the, you know, so, outsource responsibility, so, um, and I don't think that you guys are gonna think this is bad, but I think it's good to have the right expertise around the table and make this happen, so...
Yeah, and it's, it's kind of bringing me in to, like, I mean, bringing him in to help me kind of understand what we're, what our, we're set up as right now, and then to kind of bring that back to you guys. And then once we get more comfortable, like, I feel like things will just work more smoothly and, um...
What is, you should, you should...
Uh, you're, you're, you're a city administrator. I mean, I would, I'd rather we have you focus on city administrator stuff and have the financial guy work on our financial stuff. You know, I mean, I know that, I mean, obviously those jobs intertwine, but, um...
Yeah, and I know it's like my job to, to give that information to you, and I want to, us to be as transparent as possible, um, so I'm just trying to find kind of the way to get there and...
I, I think it's, I think it's a good idea. I mean, I, we're, we're looking at, you know, viewers of the money, and, I mean, you know, three, three million dollars is a lot of money. I mean, if we can have somebody else that's looking at it, kind of knowing what the margins look like, and where we should be and where we should be, and, um, you know, better returns for us, then that's what we should be doing.
I tend to agree with that. I don't handle my own.
No, I mean, I...
Right. I'm like, we would do this in our family, so...
My own investments, I, um, I tend to agree. I would like to see, get some proposal together and figure, you know, how we can, what would be the next step moving forward. I firmly believe even that fee that gets paid more is made because of the right decisions that makes that two or three folds up, you know, that those investments would be a lot better.
Wouldn't be a...
You know...
Wouldn't be a business for that.
Yeah, re- absolutely, right, right.
Take, take that for, uh, I think, and I, I personally think we should move forward on the next steps and get a proposal, or, um, whatever those next steps are, take, like, here's all, everything we have, here's the money and, you know, what it would take. I think we'll move forward on it. I mean, if it ends up turning into a permanent relationship with somebody to, you know, to fill that role for us, then, I think probably a great idea as well.
I think staying that way until the city hires a financial planner.
I, I think...
Or, or a finance person, a finance director, or someone we get to that point, I, um, I don't think it should lie, um, not to say you shouldn't learn those things and, and become a, a, a subject matter expert, but, you know, we're a lot of that, so...
Yeah, I don't, I, I, I think this is, that report is having our legal, having our engineering, or, I mean, that's...
Another return, we've unfolded to, to a little different issue.
Yeah, right.
A lot, a lot to, so, 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 um, but, yeah, I think full knowledge should provide some clarity to you guys, you know, getting to a clear, uh, statement, to, I think it's too different, I think, to consolidate that, and transparency, I think, is very beneficial to, to everyone.
Great. Well, I, if you have a proposal, I would say move forward and let's take a look at that, you know?
Perfect.
Yeah, well, thank you, thank you, come in.
Yeah, I put all the things on there, yeah.
All right. Oh. Perfect, good, thanks, Maggie, that was, uh, that's great, I guess, look at it. Then let's go to the floor.
Okay, so, in front of you, I put together a, um, I know at a previous meeting, we had looked, or the council had, um, talked about moving forward with an RFP for a city attorney. Um, so I did put together kind of a request, um, similar to, um, I, I took kind of some stuff from other, other cities and kind of tried to put it on our own. Um, there are some blanks that we would kind of need to fill... Um, there are some blanks that we would kind of need to fill in. Um, if this, if, um, I don't know if there was any additions you wanted to make, like, scope of work, um, that, that we're looking for, um, in an attorney. Um, there are, and then there's just kind of the background that, you know, kind of the process of, of, um, that, like, putting out the RFP, the dates, um, when we're expecting these applications to be, these RFPs to be submitted and to who, and, and, um, kind of what we're looking for in those applications. Um, so I guess, um, this was just kind of the preliminary step, just to have you guys look at that RFP, um, make any changes to it, um.
I thought it was very thorough, and I think you covered a lot. I looked at the skull scene, for, you know, um, fairly, uh, smooth to me. I was a little, not sure on section one there. Um, is it normal to put like a, a contract, do you have a contract now?
Yeah, I heard that circle too.
Yeah, I was, that's pretty.
Um, yeah, I, I think it depends.
Weirdly appointment, so, or an annual appointment.
Yeah.
Yeah, because even the wording was kind of weird.
Yeah, so I think you, you might want to look into, or, like, maybe check with the league and see what the league recommends doing, or something like that, but.
Yeah, I think you can do it either way. You can do like a yearly, or you can do a longer.
Annual appointment, so.
I know for garbage, we do like longer contracts. Um, so I think it's just kind of preference, but, um, but I can check.
I don't know if we have contracts for engineering, do we?
Hmm.
Um, or.
I know planner is updated every year, um.
I don't know, look into that, that's, that's one thing that jumped out for me.
Sure.
So.
Definitely like this.
I mean, if, if you have to, this entire document, and, you know, it, it seems to me it's covered everything in there, but.
Yeah, number one on page seven, looks like you haven't highlighted it, it kind of all seems constantly. Obviously that doesn't happen, so is that, looking at that.
Yeah, I was just looking to see, you know, is that something that we would like?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wrote invited to or be available to attend, okay.
I think it would be nice to see our attorney maybe quarterly, release a company and just to, you know, have some, you know, more contact with that, with that person. You know, unless it's going to be cost related.
And we can look at something like that. Maybe that's something we add in there as, you know, kind of how our engineering, we do a reduced fee for attendance. I mean, so maybe that's part of it, is not a quarterly, they attend a meeting.
It always seems like we, in the past, have been afraid to call the attorney because of, because of costs.
I think that's definitely the case.
And that should, that should never be the case. We ever have any legal question whatsoever, I want to be able to, you know, not be afraid to say, hey, we got this going on, we got that going on. And maybe we would, and we have, but it's just.
I would like to see more of a relationship with other than.
That's been a, because I have mine on this RFP, and again, I'm fine with going out RFP. I did, uh, once we decided to do that, I just gave, uh, um, give our attorney a call the next day and give him a heads up, this is what we're doing, you know, he was, he was certainly fine with that. Um, but I want to make sure we, you know, as I think through it more and we get into this, is it a specific, specific attorney, or is it the entire firm? You know, and, and those sort of things, maybe in that firm, there's a different attorney we could use, you know. Then, they have a wide variety of stuff, and there's, they've mentioned that, they've suggested that, you know. You know, find out really what, what we're going after and what, what the issues are, you know. But, um, it's something to consider, but then I did start thinking about, well, had there been times, I think there's been times we should have had an attorney here, and we didn't, but it was actually because they were told not to come. Because they, we didn't think they would be needed. So, we don't know that, I, I mean, we don't have a good handle on that. From some costs, um, that the past ministers say, you know, no, no, we don't need to hear, we, I got it covered. Maybe that person should have been here, we don't know. But, just things to consider as we knew them through this. Um, again, I'm always, I think going out for our repeat is a good thing. I think it's a very good thing, we do it a lot, and I explain that to them, and I explain why I voted in favor of it because I have for other things, and I think it's the right thing to do, but. Maybe we try to work something in that they attend on a quarterly, add up, um, you know, instead of, if they, excuse us, if they have two hundred dollar an hour, maybe they do it for fifty dollars an hour, for once a quarter, or something, at a reduced fee. I, I think that would be beneficial.
Um, and then, on page eleven, I did highlight, I know you can't see very well, um, the selection committee. Um, are you okay, are you guys okay with that? I, I know, it's, it's been a really long time since I've done an RFP. Um, and I think it just, it's really differs, like, in each community, kind of who reviews them. I know, I, I, I mean, obviously it, it will go to the council, um, but do you want a selection committee? Or do you want it to be full council?
Or, you know, we haven't, but I want to, I don't think we've had a committee. I think the administrator just kind of gone through and picked the top, the, some of the better ones.
And then presented them to the council, okay.
I like, yeah, do you have a selection committee?
I, I do too.
Um, I would like to put in there to, you know, select, uh, the top five, or the top three, you know. I'd like a number in there. Um, and if it turns out, we say we want the top five, but we only get three, then we don't need the selection committee, we just go to the next step. And I, I, I'm, I'm fine with that, I think that's the appropriate way to do it, and that's, some of these committees have to.
Yep, okay.
Now, we're going to have to number up a last week, and we got more. We need to actually, they need to know how many areas we're, we'll, we'll discuss that amongst ourselves, how many we want to pick.
Um, okay, so then it'll likely go, I'll, I'll look at more of the schedule. It'll probably go on the December eleventh to approve the final RFP. And then we'll have an actual, I'll have an actual, um, schedule listed out on that.
And there was a section there for us to all, all be, that they're travel, if there were times you're all traveling and all that, that's in there.
Yes, I believe, sorry, I wrote this like a month ago, um.
Yeah, that, I'm sure it's.
Yeah, it should, they should, um, kind of write out what all their, their different fees will be.
A lot of the going process. Yep, yep, okay. Just went up to that, I'm sure they will, but, yeah, the same information we need to know.
Provide a sample, yeah, details. And you've got senior filing, typing, phone calls, et cetera.
Yeah, that's, yep, perfect.
For a copy, please, I'd like to make sure to. I would actually put in, um, I know it's physics et cetera, but maybe to spell out, like, the mileage and the, um, travel time.
Yeah, I think those specifically should be.
Because depending on where they're coming from, they can charge it to them anyway.
Yeah, so, yeah. Make a little further than the phone, so.
Okay.
Alright, any other comments on that? Perfect, yeah, the one thing, really checking to that, the, the contract capacity, I mean. See what others are doing, and, and get feedback from the league. Or from our attorney, and you can ask our attorney too, that's what they're there for. They are our attorney, and they know we're doing this project, and that's certainly something that they should, they can get some information on. It, it may be awkward, but that's appropriate. Okay, anything else on that? I'm all adjourned. We are adjourned.